All right, so I have six o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and get started. So, welcome to the East Hampton Ordinance Committee meeting of February 10th, 2021, 6:00 PM. I see that all of us are here. Again, this meeting is being held remotely due to Governor Baker's order for open meeting law. And we don't have any minutes to approve, so I will open it to public speak time if anybody would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda. So, and tonight, basically what we have on the agenda is cannabis delivery. So if anybody wants to speak on anything other than that, now is the time. And I see none. So Counselor Zaret, since that's really the only active thing that doesn't isn't spoken for on our agenda, you want to jump into the introduction?
Yes, it would be my pleasure, Chairman Derby. So as we all know, when recreational, the recreational cannabis guidelines were rolled out, there were certain categories that were still pending and needed more discussion at the state level, at the CCC. And it looks like former Commissioner Tidal is here tonight, so I think she'll be able to probably give us a little bit more background information. So specifically, two of those categories were social consumption which and delivery. And just recently, within the last few months, the CCC finally finalized its regulations around delivery. And I wanted to at least put forward the opportunity for our municipality to essentially opt in. And so the difference, the main difference here in terms of this, this model is that it, this type of, this type of business is a non, essentially a non-brick-and-mortar business. It's essentially a storage facility with, that conducts business through a a third-party electronic retail interface on the computer and then has a fleet of vehicles to be able to make deliveries to, to purchasing individuals. And we already had a really great framework in the ordinance that we put forward for recreation. So, you know, some of the considerations I thought of was the fact that this is mainly vehicular-based. So I have some language in there about that. I thought that, so let's, let's kind of get down to kind of nuts and bolts. So, I recommended three special permits to begin with. I don't know why, that just seemed like a reasonable number. Of note also, something that's really important apropos of earlier discussions we had in terms of amendments to our, our existing ordinance was for, at least for 36 months on the state level, all these licenses are all equity-based. So either economic empowerment or, or equity applicants with a provision that after that 36 months, I believe, the state can choose to expand that period of time and also introduce additional groups, such as, for instance, I think women minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses and other, I think veteran-owned businesses, I'm not sure. I have to look at some of the specific wording, but essentially the groups, the equity groups would be potentially expanded on the state level. And that's something I really like because as you know, I was, felt very passionate about being able to introduce opportunities in our city for equity-based licensing. And this is a great opportunity to seize on. So I recommended three, three special permits to start. And seeing that this is vehicular-based, I had put in some language about idling, but be unbeknownst to me, there's already MGL around that, so it kind of makes that move. But I also made some recommendations about fuel-efficient vehicles within the fleet recommending that for,
I got you. I got it.
Thank you. For fleets with three or more vehicles to have a third of their fleet be either hybrid or electric, just for the sake of fuel efficiency, being in respect to, I think, our green mission in the city. My recommendation was certainly to definitely allow these type of businesses in highway business, industrial, mill-industrial, and then kind of maybe in downtown business and neighborhood business with some provisions. And the biggest potentially being issues around parking that I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want on-street parking to be taken up by delivery vehicles. And then neighborhood business too, I think that could be, I don't think we allow any, any cannabis establishments in neighborhood business right now, but I just wanted to put that out there. I'm thinking of like, for instance, the kitchen store on Holyoke Street, you know, that's neighborhood business. And I could certainly imagine if that was essentially just a facility for the storage of cannabis products for retrieval by delivery. I don't personally have a problem with it, but I think it could be that, I could see that being an issue within the community, but I don't personally have an issue with it. And you know, most of these provisions are all spelled out on the state level. So there's really not a lot of language otherwise to put in here. We already have, we already have language for like security plans and, you know, line queuing doesn't really apply nor does it really a traffic study because the only vehicles going in and out would be the, the actual delivery vehicles. And that's it. I invited Shaleen Tidal to come tonight because she is the, has the knowledge of all things cannabis on the state level, might be able to shed some more light on this process and, and delivery in general. And then I think we have a couple, Kevin Perry and Ezra Parsabak are potentially interested permit holders who may or may not want to speak to the, their interest in the industry as well. And that's all I have for now.
Right. Does anybody, would anybody like to comment on this particular proposal? Yes, please. Shaleen.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting me. And I just want to say thank you for considering this because at the commission level, so my term just ended December 31st. So I'm here just as a private citizen who supports equity now. But last year, we put a lot of effort into trying to make sure that our delivery licenses were something that the businesses that so far have not been able to get into the industry would be able to have their, their barriers minimized as much as possible and have exclusive access for three years. And we also tried to make it as, we tried to take the feedback that we got from municipalities to make the process as hopefully painless as possible and to encourage you to allow these businesses. Notably, we, we turned the application process around so that for delivery businesses, they will have what the commission calls pre-certification, which means they will have their documentation checked in advance and they'll get a pre-certification from the commission that shows that, in the commission's opinion, they have the propensity to run a compliant business. And so that should, we hope help, or we hope to help you to make those decisions. And I also wanted to clarify that members of the public will not be at these business types. There are two types. There are courier licenses, which are vehicles that just take the product from a retail store to a consumer. And then there's what we call delivery operators, which would take the product from the warehouse to consumers. So you can think about those two types and what makes sense for your community. But thank you very much for considering this. Oh, and I also just wanted to say, because there was some misinformation about this, if a community decides to ban retail sales, unless they opt in, delivery businesses will not be able to deliver to that community under the current regulations.
Interesting. Okay. And so I have a question. The, the electronic system, is that something that the state is, are they like bidding that out? So the, the companies that are doing this don't have any say in the, the system? Or does each delivery or courier develop their own, like electronic system, web-based system?
I think you're referring to what we called third-party technology platforms. So it's completely up to the business to decide on what platform they want to use. The only thing that we've put in place is limitations on, or requirements on security and travel manifest and that type of record-keeping. And then we also put limitations on control so that a technology platform company couldn't have unlawful control on multiple businesses, particularly if they don't meet the social equity requirements. But other than that, it's basically a free-market system. You can use whoever you like.
Okay, interesting. Okay. Great. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go for it.
I might have not done my homework properly. So my understanding was that there were already, there were already courier businesses out there that were delivering for brick-and-mortar retail and that this was specifically a, the, the delivery, delivery-only or the delivery operator license was kind of a separate, its own separate kind of license under CMR that fell under the, the equity provisions. Am I, did I get that wrong?
That's very close. So yes, the delivery operator license is a separate license type, but so is the courier license. What you might be thinking of that's already operating is that the two types we just described are for adult-use cannabis. But medical licensees have been able to deliver to patients this whole time under their existing licenses.
Okay, so still, I'll probably have to do some, some research to try to figure out how to incorporate the courier license in as well.
Sure. It sounds like Tom might have a question too.
Yeah. So yeah, I just, I hadn't even considered this courier thing. And I think what you have right now Owen, makes a lot of sense for the delivery side of things. I'm just trying to envision what, what a courier-type business would look like. So they wouldn't physically have any inventory. They'd just be picking up from like a brick-and-mortar retailer and then bringing it to a delivery, like it's almost like a DoorDash for cannabis. Is, do I have that basically right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, you have that right. And I think it's worth considering in terms of zoning that they will not have any marijuana on-site. So it's basically just a headquarters, dispatch and vehicles.
Right. So I mean, like, this could be, yeah, that's, I think that is important because it's just like a person who owns a couple of vehicles. That, I mean, that could really be located anywhere, right? Like, am I thinking about this? I just don't see what the, like, the extent to which that's going to present any sort of negative externalities is that there's like a person or there's like an address where there's like going to frequently be cars pulling out onto the street, right? Like, it might be some increased traffic, but I don't see beyond that what potential, like, externalities could possibly exist. Like, such an operation could be run out of somebody's home, basically, right? Like, I mean, I'm not saying that we shouldn't necessarily allow that, but there's nothing that would, like, keep somebody from operating a business like that out of their, their home, right? Like, you don't really need a, much of a physical location.
Well, you would, go ahead, Shaleen. I mean, you, you wrote it.
You're absolutely right, logistically and logically, but under the regulations, you wouldn't be able, not only would you not be able to run a cannabis business out of your home, everything under the statute for marijuana establishment still applies to these businesses, even though they don't have marijuana. So they will be, in my opinion, somewhat over-regulated in terms of the security that they need to have at their facility.
It's interesting. Right. Okay.
Yeah, you, so, and there was a lot of debate about this, even in municipalities, as I was talking to municipalities, that if the, so Northampton, Mass., for example, everything in marijuana is allowed by right. So where, if you are a plumber and you have your own van and you wake up every morning and you go to your driveway and you get in your van and then you go to your job site and you work, you could have your commercial vehicle stored in your driveway. But if you're a marijuana courier, you cannot have your home address as the address of your business. But theoretically, you could store the vehicle there in your driveway, but you would still need to have a location, an office, a dispatch office. You don't technically, and correct me if I'm wrong, Shaleen, but you don't technically, as a courier, need to store your vehicles at the same site where your office, your office could be, you know, above Thorne's Market in Northampton, for example, i- in, inside of Eastworks. And so they were debating, okay, do we allow that to happen? And my suggestion would be if someone, especially for equity, can we create a scenario where someone can pay very low rent because they just have a 300-square-foot office space, but has all the property, proper security provisions, but then their one vehicle is just stored off-site or they just drive that vehicle home every day. There's never any marijuana in the vehicle overnight. So for courier, you know, my recommendation would be to allow, and I can't remember what you said, Owen, what the zoning is on the valley kitchens, you know, but that might be neighborhood business. So that might be a scenario where you're never going to have anything marijuana-related, except for document storage at the location where the entity exists. And then the vehicles may be off-site, a vehicle may be stored in the Insa parking lot, for example.
Now Ezra, do you know, is that, is that requirement for having to have a separate physical space? Is that something that Northampton did by ordinance? Or is that something that is in the state regs?
Well, which, so in the state regs, you have to have an entity, have to have a, your entity has to have a space. So you can't be a home business. So that's a state law.
And I wonder, and I wonder, because we, I mean, we allow, you know, home-based businesses and a lot of them have like separate spaces or entrances. I wonder how that would play out in that whole scenario, if someone had like a garage that they ran their business out of, you know, Counselor Zaret.
I think, I think globally, though, we already restrict cannabis as a home business. So I think, I mean, you could talk about making it an exception, but I think that.
I think it would work in terms of zoning if the entity has its own separate address. So if you had, and I don't know whether this is, you know, I'm not making a recommendation on zoning, but if you had a garage, for example, and that garage had a machine shop in it or your woodworking business and you wanted to be a courier, if your garage had its own, you know, discreet, separate address where that entity could be located, then theoretically, correct me if I'm wrong, Shaleen, that would not be considered your home address because it's a secondary address, even though it's your garage of your home.
I mean, that makes sense, especially if we're looking to, for barriers to entry. I mean, you know, if someone could, you know, have their, you know, an auxiliary building as their other address, I mean, that would definitely lower the bar for entry. And then as far as cannabis business and as a home occupation, I feel like this courier, I mean, they're, they literally, you know, they, they pick stuff up and drop it off. So like, it seems like that would be a good place for an exception of some sort if, if, if we're going down this route. Yeah, Tom.
So, I mean, we don't need to come to conclusions on all of this today, but I think one thing that I would ask is, what if any regulation of these couriers is actually appropriate? Like, given the fact that they already have the state regs when it comes to, they need to have a physical address, they need to have the appropriate security and whatnot, like, what additional rules do we think the city, like, because I'm wondering if this is almost one of those things that we just want to say, like, yeah, as long as you're basically not breaking any of the state laws, we're fine with it. Like, this is not, like, if this is, if this is something that you want to do, I don't personally necessarily see what, what the issue is. Like, I mean, I'm always have my economist brain and I'm always thinking about like externalities, like, what is the, like, what's the bad thing that's going to happen if this business operates that we need to control for or, or compensate for or whatever? And I'm just struggling to figure out what that would be in this case.
Well, and I think that's a great point because, you know, we do not regulate delivery services. I mean, granted, this is a different animal in some respects, but like, we don't regulate Uber Eats, you know, because they go to restaurants, so they don't have to go to the health department and get certified, you know, like a restaurant would. So there, I, I think that's a good point. And I think that's something that we should, you know, kind of kick around and mull over as, as we kind of move through this process. Yeah, Counselor Zaret.
Yeah, I mean, I would tend to agree with Counselor Peak that, and I apologize, I somehow, I somehow missed this all when I was focused on, on the delivery operator. That, you know, the courier piece is almost like this whole other separate thing that, you know, like, I think, I think Tom said, it's just basically like DoorDash, like, you, you almost can strip away all of the other kind of constraints or requirements that are required for most of the stuff that we're looking at in the current ordinance. Would, in contrast to the delivery operators, where, which is a whole other, you know, beast in regards to storage of cannabis products, et cetera. And so, yeah, I mean, I would almost be of the mind to make, to make, make the courier discussion a separate, separate language to introduce so as not to impede the discussion about delivery operators. And essentially just carve out that, you know, almost like, I agree, I don't even know if there should be limits. And, you know, I'm trying to even think what the planning board's role would be in this. And just allow it by right as long as they have a state license.
Yeah. I, I, I think that that's, that's a perfectly acceptable way to move forward, for, you know. And if we, if we find that as we move on, that that's something that we need to address for some reason, then we can do that at a later date. So, yeah, I think just looking at the, the delivery operations is a much more efficient use of our time at this point, so.
So I mean, I'm not happy to go back and, and consult with, with the, the appropriate, the, the appropriate resources, like Shaleen, if you're available, just to make sure I, I understand this better and come back with language just for couriers.
Right. If we need to, you know, which, you know, I, I think that we can decide, cross that bridge as we come to it, maybe.
Just for what it's worth, I, I wouldn't be like opposed to just having like a paragraph that just says, couriers are permitted to, or like are allowed, provided that they are licensed, like licensed couriers are allowed. And leave it at that. Like, provided that they are operating within state regs, we're fine with it, like. And just no need, I mean, we already have things like, you know, that there, we have things cannabis-type uses when it comes to, say, like, if you want to do like edibles manufacturing, right? Like, you can just kind of do that. Like, I mean, you might need to go to the planning board, but it's like, you, you sound like we have a set number of licenses for that kind of thing because we just don't, it's just not the sort of thing that's really interacting with the public in a meaningful way.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, Counselor Zaret.
Yeah, I mean, I could write up language like that and introduce it for, just for a next meeting, just to review. If you want to try to plow through delivery operators and then we can just kind of, kind of almost add as a footnote, the courier piece, because I agree, I don't think it'll be that complicated.
No.
As with many things, it's all spelt, a lot of the operations just are basically already spelled out by the state regs. And so it's just how are we going to adopt those? And if we basically say by right, you know, may operate as a home business, maybe in, in, you know, and in these zones, that's pretty much it, right?
I don't think you can go, I, I don't think you can say that it can operate as a home business unless you can supersede the state law. But I believe the state law is, sets the precedent there. But by allowing it by right, you are setting a precedent which would encourage equity statewide. Because the part of the reason why the delivery operator was created was because it's actually running the numbers on the profit margin for courier. You're just driving a vehicle around. You know, who's taking the cut from that purchase? You go to purchase from Insa and then you deliver it to my home. I want to pay what I pay when I go to Insa's, but now I got to pay the delivery guy. So it, the profit margins are really low. So if this is an equity provision, you want to make it easier. You, you want to set a precedent in East Hampton, or I'm sorry, it's my recommendation, that, that if it's easy to set up with the zoning you have currently, then other towns will also allow that, which would open up the possibilities for people having different locations that are more affordable.
Yeah, that makes sense. Absolutely. So, Counselor Zaret, do you want to, do you want to jump into some of the, the specifics here on the delivery business? Because I mean, to, just on outward appearance, it seems like the state regs are relatively complete in that, you know, we just need to kind of fine-tune little things, you know, like, you know, hybrid vehicles and electric vehicle preference.
Yeah, yeah. So for delivery operators where they're actually storing cannabis products and, and, you know, retrieving it from that location, you know, I guess that's more relevant to what we're talking about in terms of limiting it to, you know, X amount of special permits. So I recommended three, just because it seemed like a good number based on what we're currently at. You know, initially I had a clause about extending the exclusivity period locally, but I got some feedback that we might not be able to do that.
Let me guess, from the city solicitor.
Correct. So I just, I just, just, I changed the language and just said, you know, special permits for marijuana delivery operators shall comply with the specifications of CMR 935, you know, 500.05011.
I did make you the co-host, so if you want, if you want to share your screen at any time, feel free.
Oh, sure.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, let me figure out how to do this. Hold on.
And if you want, I, I could pull it up too. Just let me know which part, if it's easier. There you go.
Um, where is it? Was it not sharing yet?
No, it's sharing. No, you got it. It's up.
Oh, because I don't see anything on my end. Oh, wait, maybe, do you see this?
Yes, yes.
If we see it scrolling?
Yep.
Okay, cool. So, okay, so let's go back and just talk about, so I just added a definition, I guess a question for Shaleen. I wrote delivery-only licensee or marijuana delivery operator is one, is, is, are they interchangeable or does I have to use one or the other?
So, delivery operator is correct. You want to change the other one to marijuana courier license.
Okay. Okay. And I guess this definition here would, would apply to both, correct?
Yes.
We might want to break that up into two definitions. Probably going to regulate them slightly differently in terms of licensing.
Right.
Yeah. Well, because where, is there a whole separate, is there a separate section then, the CMR, just for the couriers?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know how I missed that. My bad.
You might have been looking before the regulate, the newer regulations were released. That's probably what happened.
Okay. So I just, so I probably need, so marijuana. Okay, so I just, so I probably need, so marijuana, was it marijuana?
Courier license.
All right, so I'll have to make out the and then and does this definition appear appropriate for the delivery operator to you, Shaleen?
Yes, but I'm not sure on um that citation, if number eleven is correct or not.
Okay, I'll double check. That was what it was in the draft, but I don't know if um
Oh, yes, it is correct. Sorry, I just checked.
So there's the def, I have to create a definition for this. And, and then it really is just then a matter of, you know, all of our time, place and manner really applies to all this already. So, um, I don't know why I put this letter A in here, ignore that, but um we, you know, in the ten point, ten point four point four is where we specify um our special permits. Um, and I just added in the, the marijuana delivery operators here. And you know, I don't even know if this portion about special permits shall comply with the specific specification of CMR nine thirty-five, like it, it's probably, it's implicit, I would say.
I I would say that it would be implicit.
Um, so I could probably strike that.
Because they wouldn't be able to apply for it unless they had
Right.
They were following the state guidelines.
Yeah, so, um you know, I added this little thing here, because we had that whole movable mobile transitory location, I wanted to make sure that there was no, you know, sneaky business, you know, with that.
Yeah, trying to stop it through the back door.
Yeah, exactly. Um, and that's, oh, so then I had the idling, but we already have it, I I didn't realize that MGL has idling.
Yep, I think, what is it? I think it's five minutes.
Yeah, it is, yep. Or there, there's like a clause for if it's necessary to power.
Because emergency vehicles don't follow it.
So, we could take this out. So then it just comes down to the hybrid thing, and it's really up, you know, um, it's up to you, you guys. If you thought, I just wanted to put that in there in terms of a, you know, consideration for um, you know, fuel efficiency and um maintaining a low carbon footprint when we're talking about primarily vehicle vehicular driven businesses.
I mean, it's, it's in line with our, you know, with our kind of mission as a, as a city to, to try to increase the use of hybrid and electric vehicles. And, and, you know, I, I think it makes a lot of sense. It it dovetails nicely with our solar initiative that we're working on now as well, you know? I think that, my only concern is like thinking about barriers to entry is, you know, is, is this something that would be prohibitive? As far as cost wise, if this was something we required right away, uh, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, so it's for three or more, I mean, I guess like I was trying to be conscious about the size of the fleet, like, so you know, or could we expand it to say, you know, have a larger number would require, you know, a cer- a certain percentage. I don't know. Tom's got his hand up.
Go ahead, Tom.
You know, I, I was just reading that at this point, like the prince between hybrid or electric vehicles and conventional vehicles is, it's really getting smaller and smaller um, in terms of the actual cost of the vehicle. So I, I'm not sure if like, there's a, like, the idea that this would be a barrier. I mean, you know, I'm fine with it, I'm like, uh, I'm, I'm not like married to it, but I'm fine with it. But I also think that like, it's hard for me to see that as being like a really credible serious barrier uh, to entry for an organization that is in the process of purchasing multiple vehicles.
Okay, thanks. And it looks like Kevin raised his hand, so go ahead, Kevin.
Yes, councillors, I appreciate you guys uh addressing this tonight. To the hybrid and electric, I mean, I'd just like to say as a owner of a company who we made a, a very valiant effort to try to go to hybrid and electric, um, I think the barrier to entry is not so much the cost, it's, it really comes down to the logistics that we have somewhat, I think anyone has really yet to work out. For example, the requirements for the vehicles for storage, cameras and et cetera really lend themselves to being, having these deliveries in some type of a small sprinter. Uh, I think when you think of a lot of hybrids and electrics, you think of the Priuses and the smaller cars. And I think logistically, uh, from what we've seen so far, I'm not convinced that those are going to be feasible delivery vehicles. Um, and also the, the range, so, you know, the electric vehicle for somebody who hopes to have a driver on the road for eight hours a day, I think becomes almost a, a non-starter. You're really limited with hybrid vehicles, at which case if they're going to be driving around town, we find, um, and this is what we ran into with our, uh, my other construction company here, was that the fuel efficiency is almost nominal, just because, um, you know, you're, you're not able to uh on long highway runs, rather, you're not able to just run off of the battery. So, I I certainly appreciate the sentiment, um, but perhaps if it is going to be in, it could be you know, six or seven or more, or something like that, just so that uh, we have a fair shot at trying to have a decent fleet that we know is functioning before we sort of work out the kinks of trying to tackle the, the hybrid or electric hurdle.
I mean, that, that's, I mean, to me, that sounds fair. I, I think that the, at least from what I've been reading, the the emerging technology is going to be skewed towards electric delivery vehicle. I know Rivian is making a, a, a delivery van for Amazon that they're, they're using right now. I think, you know, it's like, we're just kind of on the cusp of something. And so, in, in five years, this might be just an absolute no brainer because every post office truck in the, in the country is going to be electric, you know, so, um, but you know, I, I, I'm, I'm open to looking at this and, and maybe adjusting the numbers if, if we need to because we might just be a little ahead of the curve here.
Couldn't agree more. Um, you know, I, I think that, let's face it, at the end of the day, uh, profitability is going to be one of the key uh goals here for us. And the moment that we see that electric or hybrid is, you know, makes financial sense and, you know, good for the planet and, and saves money, it's, it's a win-win, but I, I think you're right, you know, we might be a few years ahead of the curve. And so if we just have some flexibility in the meantime, uh, I, I, I feel that that would be helpful.
I, I'm, I'm totally open to that, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I, I, I guess one, one way, and I had suggested, suggested this to Owen. Which is how he changed the language here, that like, okay, once you surpass a certain number of vehicles, but even if there's just an extra language that says, or some other you know, offset of your energy use, you know, so if you can't do that with the vehicles, but you can, um, you know, plant trees, put solar panels on, do carbon offset, something like that, so that i- if, if there's um, a way to get there and still be profitable, that'd be great. What I worry about is, it's absolutely, we all support it. But if Uber Eats and Domino's Pizza and Amazon and everybody else doesn't have that requirement, then uh, let alone competitors in other municipalities uh, aren't required to do that. Then you are starting off with, with a deficit.
Yeah, I, I love that, it's like a micro carbon tax, you know, I, I, I like that. But then again, I, I, I think the last statement, you know, speaks volumes, which is, you know, we could literally have someone in the next town over that has none of these requirements. And that, it, you know, is, changes the, you know, the profit margin. And, you know, just enough to, to edge out somebody else. So, I, I think this is one maybe we come back to and, and, and kind of sit with for a little bit and, and think about the numbers and think about the, the requirement and see, you know, what we can do to to make it green, but also make it fair. So, look, if that's cool with you guys. Okay.
Yeah, I don't have an objection. Um, we should, um so are you proposing maybe a meeting like another time where we can look at courier language and, and look at this and then try to move it forward to uh?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, or, or we just, um because we do, we still have to have our joint public hearing with the planning board.
Right.
So, but, and I, I agree that we should have this like dialed up and tightened up before we meet with them. But, you know, so, you know, maybe we, once we sort out, if there's anything else that we need to sort out, we just come back and say, do we want to make it six vehicles? Do you want, you know, like, um, because if you're, if you're, if you have six vehicles, then you know, you're probably moving enough cannabis around to make a decent profit if you're using six vehicles. So, you know, having one of those be a hybrid is probably not going to be that big of a deal. Or, you know what, or diesel, how about like, we add diesel in there, because that's, that's a different, you know, uh, even, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a fossil fuel, but it also can be biodiesel is, is viable. And um, it's, has, you know, more uh mileage per gallon, so you know, clean diesel could be a potential piece there too. And I think those van, like sprinter vans, you can get diesel sprinter vans.
So, um, do you want to try and make a decision now? Or do you want to try to, do you want to have another meeting like in a few weeks and, and we can nail this all down?
Uh, I mean, I guess it depends on how much other stuff we need to look at. I mean, I, I'm perfectly fine with doing it tonight.
There's, there's really not much else. I mean, the question is, you know, with uh well, I guess it comes back to what do we want to do about courier licenses? Um, do we want to bring back, do we want to wait to bring back language for that too then?
I like Tom's idea of just, let's just say that if they follow the state you know, this, if they're licensed by the state, then they're allowed in East Hampton.
Yeah, I mean, so you want me to just try to figure out language for that?
Put that in the definition, just uh, you know, this definition, uh, cannabis courier, uh, if licensed by state, allowed in East Hampton.
Yep, where do we put that?
I'm, I mean, I think you could probably even put it in the definition, but I mean, that's, uh, it looks like, uh, Tom, go ahead and then Shaleen.
I was just gonna say, um, ju- just process wise, as much as I like to keep things moving along, um, it might benefit us to, you know, wrap up these discussions and then, you know, wait till our next meeting to vote to send this anywhere, just so that we get uh, an opportunity to sort of sit down and um, I mean, I think we, we broadly agree on this stuff, but just writing the language, maybe it would be helpful to just have a meeting, like have a, a ti- a next time to you know, that there's a little bit of a break to, to consider this stuff.
Adjust it. I think that's great, that's fun, fun with me. Okay.
Yeah, um, so oh, sorry.
Thank you. Um, I just had a question about um, the process for a courier license. Um, just to make sure that uh, it makes sense in terms of like what you need for each step of the application. So is the idea that um, they would get a host community agreement? And then they would get a provisional license from the commission and then they would get a special permit from the city?
I, I think that's that's, that's my understanding of the process at least.
Okay, so then the definition would just say, um, as long as they're provisionally licensed. Um, that makes perfect sense. Good, thank you, just wanted to clarify.
Perfect. Yes, councillor there, sorry.
It's okay. I think maybe the place to put that in would be under, probably under ten point, ten point four point four, we're talking about the special permits. We can maybe put like a sub clause under there about couriers, because the couriers, I think we're going to have like a very more, more open language. And um, so I can, I could put together some language for a future meeting and we could just put that in there probably.
Councillor Peak.
I'm newer to this than both of you, uh, in terms of you were involved when we wrote this language originally. For those cannabis type, like use types, which we already don't subject to a, like like a numerical license number, for instance, manufacturing, like, you know, there, there must be like a is, do we have anything in particular in here about, like, those things? Because I'm wondering if they shouldn't be treated in a similar way, where, like, it's a use type that we permit, like we allow, but we don't really have any special new licensing requirements.
Councilor there.
Yeah, councillor Peak has a great point. We might not have to do anything other than define it and then put in the table of uses where it's permitted, um, and by what, by what kind of permit, which would be special permit. And that would be it, that people would just go to the planning board and apply for it, there's no real regu- like local regulations other than defining the zones that they can operate in.
The state regulations.
Yeah, so, right, you're right, because we don't have anything, I mean cultivation, right, is just uh, I'd have to look at the tail of use, but there's, you just, you're right, Tom, that, that might be the easiest way.
I think so. Perfect. So let's, 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 um, Owen, do you want to just, for our next meeting, do you want to just put that definition in and, and the table of uses annotation? And then, you know, maybe and, and that's kind of it, right? Other than where the, the delivery business can be located? I mean, that's the last kind of piece here.
Yeah, so what are your thoughts about that? Maybe we can, I mean, I think highway business, industrial, mill industrial are no brainers. I put a neighborhood business because, you know, uh just wanted to include that in there, downtown business, you know, uh, kind of as a, a maybe depending on certain circumstances, um, so just
Like, it wouldn't be, I mean, it wouldn't be a main street storefront or a cottage or Union Street storefront, but it could be within that zone. There's, you know, uh, you know, for example, the gas station across from, um, the pond, uh, which I think is being slated to, they're going to build a project there, but like, that in the back of that could have been a warehouse, a small warehouse where they ran a delivery operation. And that's downtown business, so.
Yeah, I mean, like the hardware store on Union Street.
Right.
You know, or um, Whitley Electric, um, so, I mean, maybe just the requirements that they have to have off street parking. I thought was the only, you know, uh, but I don't know.
I, I, I mean, that, to me, that makes sense, is that they would have to have off street parking. Neighborhood business, I think, like, I personally have no problem with it, but I think that what you're going to find is that most of the neighborhood businesses are going to be, they're, they're so surrounded by residential that you know, a new construction of a, of a large, um i- storage facility with the security requirements might be pushing it. So, if, unless we're looking for a battle, we could probably leave neighborhood business out.
I'm, I'm just looking at the zoning map right now. Um, and trying to figure out what's actually neighborhood business. So like, Parsons Street up to Everett Street is neighborhood business. Uh, the north side of Pleasant Street is neighborhood business. Actually, interestingly enough, that part of Holyoke Street is not neighborhood business, so they must have had to get a
Probably grandfathered.
Or something, yeah. There's a little, looks kind of weirdly spot zone section of South Main that is neighborhood business.
That's, would that, that'd be like Old Colony and, and College Highway Variety.
Yeah, right at the, yeah, like right at the corner of South and Main. Uh, and that's kind of it. Uh, so we're not actually, I mean, I, I do think like Um, uh, and that's kind of it. Uh, so we're not actually, I mean, I I do think like, uh, there's, there's but Pleasant Street is maybe the the biggest example of, um, like the parts of Pleasant Street that are not mill industrial are primarily neighborhood business. There's, you know, there's, there's an auto shop there and, you know, a couple other, there's like an electrician's business there. And Parsons Street has, you know, a handful of of things. So it's not like there's no properties that would be excluding by excluding it, but we also, when we'd be talking really about like three streets.
Right, pretty, it's a small area for sure. Um, and and it might not lend itself, so I don't know. I mean, I think if, yeah, I don't know. I I I think it's probably fine to to exclude neighborhood business. And I, but I was just like, oh, well, maybe we could do it at a future date, but that doesn't work. So, all right, Counselor Zaret.
Yeah, and to be clear, I only included that for the sake of discussion, that I thought that it would have been kind of bold. But I agree with you that it's, it's, it does probably getting pushed back and it's probably not worth it to the in the, in the, in regards to the other space we have within the city and 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 trying to, so, yeah.
I think that makes sense.
So I could take that. But but then I guess the, would you agree with, for downtown business, just having that one provision?
Yeah, off street parking, I think is, is the one that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I gotta change some the terminology. Um, and then, so I guess while we're here, what do you, so what do you want to do with the fuel efficient vehicles?
Um, let's, all right, here's a thought. Let's, let's increase the size of the fleet a little bit and add in diesel as well. I think that would potentially mitigate some of the the initial impact, but would still, you would still express a a preference. You know, I I don't want to take it out completely because I feel like, you know, like we don't have another place to really express our preference as far as, you know, and I, and I think preferentially, we would like to them to have electric or hybrid vehicles, so. If, in a perfect world.
So how many do you think? And 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 what, what percentage and how many?
Well, that's, that's where we can discuss here. Let's, um, I don't know, maybe five. I guess I'll just throw it out to s- to start. We can bargain from here.
For talking about a third, should we just go to six?
Fair enough.
Yeah. That's fine. I mean, that's a pretty, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think that's also consistent with, with the number that Mr. Perry recommended.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with that. I I think that, you know, we, we, you know, we still have, there's quite a bit of process still left with this. You know, so if we, um, let you wordsmith it, take a look at the, the regulations for cu- courier, and then we come back and we talk about, um, you know, finalizing it before we jump into the joint public hearing with the planning board. I think that's a good start. Um, it looks like Kevin raised his hand again. I get a little notification. Kevin?
Yeah, thank you. Um, real quick, I just had a question for you and perhaps maybe now's the time to clarify this. Um, I know with retail, there's.
Well, I think you cut out there. Can you guys hear him? No.
Those distances between marijuana delivery?
We, we, we lost you there, Kevin. So can you just repeat the, the question again?
No, I'm sorry. Hey, could you hear any better?
Yeah, I can hear, I can hear you perfectly now.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
Is it possible to clarify if there's an intent to have the different, the distances between retail and delivery? Um, as you have them clarified now between multiple retail locations?
That's a good, that's a really good question. Um, and I don't see any reason why there would need to be any sort of separation between uh, a cannabis retailer and a delivery, cause they're so separate. Um, a- and and if they were, you know, I mean, if they were, yeah, I don't, I don't see any reason for that. So I I don't know what you guys think, but I would say that we, that would be something that we would explicitly, you know, excuse.
I mean, you know where I stand on those buffers in general. I, I, I understand the, the why we did it, but I've never been a huge fan. But certainly I can't see outside of, like, if you wanted to have two, just to go back, I know, keep bringing this up, but like, if two edible manufacturers wanted to rent out space in the same, like, next to each other in one of the mills, like, I don't see why it matters. And likewise, if you have two couriers or two uh delivery locations located right next to each other, I I don't, I understand what the sort of idea of having like, you know, uh, wanting to avoid the, like, the appearance of something becoming like the cannabis district or whatever. But I just don't see that with a, this sort of like, kind of car oriented business. And frankly, the sort of locations that we're permitting this in are not in the sort of places where you'd even really notice if there's gonna be two of these businesses right next to each other.
Yep. Counselor Zaret.
Well, I guess. Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Kevin.
I guess I just wanted to also clarify that it's not just between delivery operators, it would be between a delivery operator and retail. For example, if retail opened uh on Cottage Street, you know, and uh if I was to open delivery out of the button building, I I just wanted to clarify that those buffers, you know, if we can clarify that the buffers do not, um, you know, they're not valid between delivery and retail, like they are between multiple retail.
Yeah, and I think that, that's something that we can, we could easily state explicitly, cause I I I would see no reason for there to be a buffer between those two businesses. So, Counselor Zaret.
Like, you know, so one, I don't, it's, I don't, I mean, based on the intention of why we put the, those buffers in place, I don't see a reason why there, the, the two should mix. Um, and frankly, because of the nature of the operation of of a delivery business, as far as I'm concerned, you could have um, two um, delivery operators right next to each other. Um, and the language just already says cannabis retailer, so, um, I don't think.
Yeah, so, so delivery wouldn't even come into.
Yeah, it would apply, but the other thing I'm, I'm gonna probably have to do, I'm just looking, I'm just looking at the license requirements. And I wonder, because of the provisional status that uh Shailene had mentioned, if we might have to make to, I might have to play around with the language a little bit for license requirements for, um.
For, for delivery.
Yeah, because.
Yeah, no, I I see, I see what you're saying, cause it, it sounds like it's gonna be an expedited process for delivery for the licensing. And and we, we remember we, we specifically worded it like that to kind of slow it down. That was like Jeff's recommendation at that time.
Mm hmm.
Um, so, yeah, let's, let's, let's take a look at that.
Oh, uh, actually, no special permit shall be granted without the cannabis establishment first having been issued a provisional license. Oh, so that's fine then, right?
Yeah, okay. Fair enough.
Can you see this language?
I can't see it.
Oh, it's not on your screen?
Oh, oh, sorry, I was looking at the other one. Um, yeah, this, this, I think this is fine. But there was something else about being deemed complete, right?
Yeah, up here, I'm sorry. I just wasn't sure if this would run counter current to, this was our, this is the language for retail, but I don't know if there's anything in here that would be problematic for um, delivery operators.
Uh, it all looks fine to me.
Okay, cool, then we don't have to change that. All right, well then, I could, um, then I just have to make some language for couriers and do you both agree that the simplest thing is to just provide a definition, reference where it is in the C M R, then uh create uh, create uh for the table of uses?
I, I think that's, that's a great way to do it, and I'm sure Jeff will, you know, give, put his two cents in too. Uh, but no, but like as far as, as far as I can tell, I think this is in, in a pretty good spot for us to kind of um, marinate, digest, and then come back, take a final look, and then we, we can set the public hearing with the planning board.
Okay.
Yeah, awesome. Shailene.
Um, I.
Counselor, uh, Zaret, may I just ask one question?
Oh, one, one second. Shailene is gonna go and then, then feel free after.
Thank you. I think this is a dumb question, but I just want to ask it anyways. Um, the special permit, just from the perspective of trying to lower the barrier as much as possible, um, it's not in question. All of these licensees, including couriers, have to go through the special pro- permit process and get a special permit, right?
Yeah, I think that that's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just making sure. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Kevin, go ahead and unmute. There you go.
Um, hate, hate to be a, a pain, but I just have a question a- as to what the, um, if it's possible to entertain not requiring the provisional before a special permit application, just in in hopes that the CCC is going to move slightly faster um on these couriers, uh, given they're trying to expedite, you know, and lower the barrier to entry. And also given the time that the special permits may take, um, i- it would really be ideal that once a host community agreement is executed, um, that we be able to run these simultaneously.
Your thoughts, guys?
Uh, I see Shailene has her hand up.
Oh, just wanted to add, uh, an option to consider would be you could replace provisional with um, pre-certification from the commission. That would be earlier in the process.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So that would have to be a s- a specific piece directly that didn't re- apply to retail, but just applied to this.
Yeah, why, I'm sorry, I lost my place. I don't know why. Um, sorry.
That's all right.
Uh, here we are. So, um, uh, Shailene, what was the term used? Did you say pre-certify, pre-certification?
Yes, if you just replace provisional license with pre-certification.
So.
Maybe you can put it.
Then if, if it, in, in ten point, ten point, seven point, four point two, we could create another clause specifically for, um, for uh, delivery operators to, to, that, that, um, uh, that, to, to say pre-certification, is that?
Looks like Tom has his hand up too. Go ahead, Tom.
If Owen has a question for, uh, this title, I'm, I'm fine waiting until after that. Was that a question, Owen, what you were saying?
With language about pre-certification, no, no special permit shall be granted by the planning board to a, we'll say, um, uh, delivery operator applicant without the cannabis establishment first having been issued pre-certification from the commission.
Right.
Would that be sufficient, do you think?
I recommend doing it for both delivery operators and couriers.
Mm hmm. So maybe you could do seven point, four point two A, and for, for delivering courier, pre-certification is required.
Yep, yep.
Tom, did you, did you still have a question?
Yes, uh, my question is, does this pre-certification process, is this just for the delivery operators and couriers, or is this a new system that would also be rolling out theoretically to like a future retailer?
Well, at this time, it's only for delivery, but the hope was that if it, if it, um, you know, helps the process speed up, that it would be expanded in the future.
Beautiful. All right, then let's just do that. And then if it's working real well and and the CCC later allows that for retail, we can go back and maybe explore that as an option.
Sounds good. Okay, so, um, I feel like we're in a pretty good spot. Unless there's any other questions, uh, we could probably look towards another meeting and and tight, you know, batten down the hatches at that meeting. Go ahead, Owen.
Uh, I actually had a question on another agenda item, just, so, um,
Yeah, sure.
Got after we, we close this one.
Okay. Yeah, so, uh, do, do you guys, does anybody else have any other thoughts or questions on this? Um, cause we prob- what we'll probably do is I'm thinking we'll probably do one more meeting. Um, just to look at the final kind of draft before we send it over to the planning board for our joint public hearing. And then from there, it goes to the full council for the full public hearing. Um, yeah, it doesn't look like anybody has anything. All right, cool. Uh, do, do you guys want to take a look at, uh, time for our next meeting? Or do you want to talk about the other stuff first?
I just had a quick question. So if I remember correctly, the, the solar and new construction, we basically looked that over and we, we pretty much were happy with language and just sent it to the planning board, right?
Yep.
Okay, I just want to make sure I remember that correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's right, that's right. And we have, don't forget, Tuesday, we have the joint public hearing.
Did you say the planner had concerns?
I think he has some other things that he, around solar that he wanted to kind of add or like he.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, just like a more comprehensive look.
Sure.
He'll, he'll introduce that to us on Tuesday.
Okay, all right. Um, like, yes, we're meeting next week, next Tuesday.
Yeah, next Tuesday. And then we can look beyond that. But Ezra, did you have a question?
I just wanted to say thank you all very much. This is a very productive meeting, and if the delivery aspect of the discussion is overall, sign off, just didn't want to be rude.
Okay, thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
And, uh, Shailene, I might, um, I might touch base with you about some of this language, just to make sure it's correct, since I, I'll give myself a B plus for this. But I somehow, I somehow misunderstood the, the role of c- couriers, uh, as it currently stood, so uh, I'll probably put together and and send it over if that's okay.
Please, yes. And the commission hasn't put out this guidance yet, so it is not your fault. And in fact, I'm sure that many cities will be looking at this as their model, since there isn't another one. So thank you for the discussion, real, um, breath of fresh air to just be talking to people with common sense. So thank you so much.
Thank you as always for.
I don't know about that.
Yeah. Thanks. Um, yeah, so, uh, we have next Tuesday with the planning board, if we want, um, I'm supposed to be on vacation next week. Good luck with that, right? Tuesday, Wednesday, um, maybe the twenty third or, oh, we are trying to sh- shy away from.
I think I could, I think I could do Tuesdays now. I just have to, let me just double check one quick thing here.
Cause I can't, I don't imagine it would take all that long anyway. Tom?
Uh, yeah, so I can, I could do Tuesdays now.
Okay, cool. And Tom?
The twenty third is fine with me, yeah.
Okay, perfect. So I'll put us in for a twenty third at six, and I'm thinking, I mean, it probably won't even be more than a half hour.
Mm hmm. Well, there might be some stuff in the packet next week, so.
Oh, okay.
Or sorry, tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, very good.
Um, yeah, I'll get all that tightened up. I mean, it's pretty close. I just gotta get the language done. I'm really grateful that the, the former commissioner was able to attend tonight.
Uh, that was very helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's close, I just, yeah.
Awesome. All right, well, I, I think we're in a good spot. I guess we'll, uh, see you guys on Tuesday.
Yeah, great. See you.
Motion to adjourn.
There we go. All right, we have a motion. All right, we have a motion and a second. And, uh, Tom P.
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
I vote yes to. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. And we'll see you in a couple days.
Always a pleasure.
Take care, guys.
See ya.